Lift of arms to the Ukrainians that were remarkably effective in taking on a much larger, presumably more sophisticated Russian military. Second, the U.S. and its allies put together some truly damaging sanctions that have made Russia sort of an international pariah. And so what President Biden is clearly hoping is that the Chinese would look at this and say, could this all happen to us? And that the experience of the Ukraine war would add to the deterrent effect that would make the Chinese think twice if case they were planning on taking on Taiwan either with a direct attack or trying to go slowly squeeze it.
But David, also, you know, China isn't Russia and Ukraine isn't Taiwan. So how would a potential conflict with China over Taiwan be different from the one we see in Ukraine?
It's a great question because while there are some superficial similarities, there are a lot of big differences. And the first thing the Chinese will tell you is, well, our military isn't the Russian military and our gear isn't built by Russian engineers. It's built by Chinese engineers in Chinese factories with Chinese artificial intelligence infused in it. So their first reaction would be, don't confuse the kind of fight the Russians put up with what the Chinese military could do.
Because the Chinese think their military is better?
That's right. And there are also geographical differences, right? This has been a land war we have been watching unfold for the past three months. But it would be very different in the case of Taiwan. That's a war that would take place largely at sea and of course, in outer space.
What do you mean?
Key to running the Chinese and American navies around Taiwan would be communications, intelligence, and visibility that comes from our satellite assets. And that's one of the reasons that the Chinese have invested so heavily in anti-satellite technology.
So that's a huge difference. The Chinese would actually be shooting our satellites out of the sky.
That's right. They would be trying to blind us and we would be trying to blind them. And along the way, we would probably be turning off each other's cyber capabilities, our internet, and so forth.
Got it.
And there's another key difference in this example, Sabrina. You know, Ukraine and Taiwan are incredibly different places. So a conflict in Taiwan would impact the Western world on a scale which the war in Ukraine simply cannot. Taiwan is a huge exporter of the semiconductors that we all need the most. They come out of a giant factory up on a hill outside of Taipei owned by Taiwan Semiconductor. Taiwan Semiconductor makes the world's most sophisticated chips. It exports them to the United States. So that's why President Biden was visiting that Samsung factory. We're in a position now where it's going to be a long, long time before we can declare any kind of independence in the semiconductor arena. And until then, China's got leverage.
So David, we've been talking about this looming confrontation between the U.S. and China as if it's this real possibility. But how seriously should we be thinking about a potential invasion of Taiwan? I mean, is that a real threat?
I think it's a real possibility. You know, certainly if you ask around in the Pentagon, a Chinese invasion of Taiwan is one of those scenarios that is constantly wargamed, where we often try to figure out who would gain the advantage. It's rarely talked about in public. So it really struck me the other day when Admiral Charles Richard, who's the commander of the United States Strategic Command, that's the command that runs all of our nuclear arsenal, said that he was worried that Beijing was learning lessons from the way that President Putin has threatened Ukraine and that would apply those lessons to Taiwan. He said in some congressional testimony that the Chinese are, quote, "watching the war in Ukraine closely and will likely use nuclear coercion to their advantage in future conflicts." And he said explicitly that Beijing's aim, quote, "is to achieve the military capability to reunify Taiwan by 2027, if not sooner." Now remember, he said the word capability. He didn't say they would actually go do it. But that was pretty stark.
Right. David, what did this trip and Biden's comments tell us about the administration's China policy?
Well, the first thing that it tells us is that the hawks inside the administration, who believe that the United States has to take a much tougher line with competing with China wherever we can and pushing back on China's military ambitions, are sort of winning the day. But the second thing that it tells you about this administration is that they may be rethinking the utility of strategic ambiguity.
How so?
There is a line of thought in the foreign policy community that strategic ambiguity was terrific during that period from the Nixon trip in 1972 to roughly the present day. But that it has, as Richard Haas, the president of the Council on Foreign Relations and a longtime diplomat, put it not so long ago, it's grown long in the tooth. And maybe what one needs to deal with a much more aggressive and much more capable China is some strategic clarity, some clear statement to the Chinese that if you take on Taiwan, you are taking on the United States as well. And so it's possible that what we're watching unfold here is Biden trying to signal somewhat subtly to the Chinese, yeah, we still have strategic ambiguity, but it's not that ambiguous while I'm around. That if you did something truly overt with Taiwan, you'd be looking at the Americans in the region, even if you weren't looking at them in direct combat. He may be just using the Ukraine crisis here to make the Chinese leadership think twice about what price they would pay if they sailed forward around Taiwan.
David, thank you.
Thank you.
David Sanger covers national security for The New York Times.
The Daily is supported by Noom, providing an online evaluation and the tools to help people lead healthier lives through behavior change. More information at noom, N-O-O-M, dot com. And by C3AI. C3AI software enables organizations to use artificial intelligence at enterprise scale, solving previously unsolvable problems. C3AI, this is Enterprise AI. Distribution of The Daily is made possible by American Public Media. The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily by going to nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Sabrina Tavernise. See you tomorrow.
New Orleans' own Tank and the Bangas are past winners of NPR's Tiny Desk Contest. They've been nominated for a Grammy and are now out with a new studio album. Lead singer Terri O'Neal Ball says it's all one big surprise.
I never would have expected the album to sound like this. I don't think none of us there is so adult.
We'll meet Tank and the Bangas next time on 1A.
That's 1A every weekday beginning at 10 on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Today marks three months since Russia invaded Ukraine. For many Ukrainians, that milestone is sinking in.
We are returning to our evening session for May 24, 2022. Item K of our agenda is a public hearing and second reading of ordinances. Item K1 is a petition of, and I'll let the petitioner give us their names because I don't want to mess it up, to obtain a special use permit to operate a short-term rental on approximately a half acre on property zone R1, low-density residential district located at 4309 Crest Hill Drive. This is in Windsor Hills Magisterial District. I'd like to welcome Philip Thompson, our Director of Planning, to the podium. Good afternoon, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you mentioned, this application is for a special use permit for a short-term rental. The property is located here off of Crest Hill Drive. You can see kind of the general location where Frampton Avenue is and Garson Hill. I look at the property itself, 4309 Crest Hill Drive is the property, approximately a half acre in size. Apparently has a single-family home on it and they are proposing a short-term rental. Couple photographs. Here's a picture of the house. You can kind of see it kind of does slope off a little bit as you look that one direction and looking back up the other direction, I can see some of the drop off as well. A couple of photos that the applicant provided for the interior. This is the entrance door. That's on the backside. Little kitchen, bedroom, and I'll save some more pictures of the kitchen area, kind of a layout. They have a basement apartment, roughly about 1,300 square feet that they would utilize for the short-term rental. You know, last year, we amended the ordinance to include short-term rental and it's defined as the provision of a room or space that is suitable or intended for occupancy for dwelling, sleeping, or lodging purposes for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days in exchange for a charge for the occupancy. There are some other short-term rentals that we define, so those aren't included in this definition in our ordinance. We did include certain standards, use and design standards associated with this use. One of the issues deals with submitting a zoning permit and having information relevant to the applicant and contact information. If they change that information, of any change, that we need to be notified within 30 days. Obviously, if it switches owners, the zoning permit expires, not the special use permit, but to get the new information for the person that would be utilizing that. And then obviously, it can be revoked by the zoning administrator if they fail to comply with all the applicable regulations. The other part is in R1, R2, is that if it's less than five acres, then you need to get a special use permit. Obviously, this is a half-acre site, so that's why they're getting the special use permit. Surrounding zoning, it's all R1 and what surrounds it's all R1. As far as future land use, it's neighborhood conservation all around the subdivision, which wants to conserve the existing development pattern. So the use is you're still keeping a single-family home, so it's still consistent with the future land use designation. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 3. There was one citizen who spoke. The concerns raised included guest parking space being located near an existing bedroom and guests causing noise when they leave early in the morning or late at night and impact to property values. Commissioner asked the applicant several questions and the following information was provided. They only allow one car parking space for their short-term rental. Does not allow renters to park on the street due to safety concerns. The short-term rental is only for the basement apartment space. The applicant does live upstairs. They prefer the short-term rental over the long-term rental as it gives them more control and causes less damage. And then the applicant stated that she will be adding language to her rental agreement to address noise associated with that parking. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the special use permit for a short-term rental with one condition, and that it be limited to the basement apartment that's approximately 1,300 square feet in size. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Mr. Radford?
Yeah, thank you. So how are we going to monitor the basement? They can only use the basement. It's a special suggested condition, right?
Right. I mean, well, just like any condition, it would be if we got, they live upstairs, so they're not going to use that. What we're trying to guard against with the condition is that, you know, in the future, if it's sold, you're not using the whole house or the special use permit. So it's already a basement apartment, which is, they could do accessory apartment by right. They used to, I think, believe, use that apartment to do long-term rentals, so, which is a by right use in R1. So we would do it like any other condition. If we got complaints, we would investigate and monitor that. And if it was beyond the basement apartment for the short-term rental, we, you know, use our enforcement actions.
Okay. And then the tape, the slide you just had up about them adding the language, they want people to park on the street. It's, I mean, it's a public street. You can park on the street.
Yeah. No, what she said was she has a rental agreement where when she rents out to somebody, she puts certain things. So she only allows one parking space and they have a designated spot in there.
Right.
And she has lost, she mentioned this during the Planning Commission, lost rentals because people want to have more than one vehicle. She doesn't allow them to park on the street. They could, but she doesn't in allowing that as part of her rental agreement. And I'll let them speak to that as well. The issue was, is I think there's an adjacent neighbor and their concern was people coming in either early or late at night, making noises near. You saw the one photo of it looking back up, the proximity of that to that bedroom. So she was going to add language in her rental agreement to deal with that issue as far as keeping people from making noise or trying to bring that to their attention, not to make noises as much as they can.
Right, okay.
But that's in her agreement that she has people sign when they rent a space, rent that space.
Okay. In your packet, you supplied us with the letter from the neighbor that's just below them. Have they seen that letter from that neighbor?
I believe so.
Okay.
He handed it out at the Planning Commission meeting, so I'm sure she got a copy of it.
Okay, very good. Okay. I'm done.
So what teeth do we have if someone begins to violate this? Any, because this is, these are happening more and more.
Correct.
I think my concern will be, you know, there's obviously not a renewal of this permit.
Right.
But if it begins to be more and more issues, what actions can we take either to remove the permit or give an idea of?
So if you looked at one of the conditions I went over, and I can go back to if you wanted to see it again, was that one of the things that we built into the standards was that the zoning administrator has the right to deny or remove the zoning permit. Well, the zoning permits will get you to be able to do it. Obviously, any condition that's violated. Right. So that's not only, it's talking about conditions on the short-term rental, but it's also talking about county regulations as well. Right? So it's broader than, so basically, it could be the zoning administrator revoke the permit if it's not, it's a violation of the special use permit or violation of other county codes. But you always have with a special use permit, the ability to revoke a special use permit if it comes to a certain point. So, again, we do have that as an enforcement mechanism. As I mentioned, the, you know, long-term rental, accessory apartment is a by right use. So if they wanted to rent it out year long, which I think they had in the past as an accessory apartment, that's a by right use in R1.
I just know there's been concerns, people in my district talking about, you know, the more and more of the Airbnbs are popping up and how can we really regulate? Someone comes in, whether it's a noise issue or whatever, what teeth does the county have? So I just want a clarification. Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Would the petitioner like to speak?
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. And I would really like for you to give us your name for the record because I wasn't going to mess it up.
And I noticed he didn't shy either. Sherrell Gregoriyev.
Yeah, I would have never got that.
Gregoriyev. Yep. I guess I'll just explain what I did in the first meeting, why we did it, and the experience we've had so far. I wanted to, I've stayed in a few Airbnbs myself traveling. It was a very nice experience over hotels, especially just when you're going to stay on the long term. It gives you more of a home base to cook meals if you want, just relax. So anyway, I had such a good experience with that that we decided to do it ourselves. Very, very nervous to start with. What kind of guest are we going to have? And we've been doing it now for two years because we started before you actually had the special use permit. And it has been nothing but positive. I have not had any problems. With the neighbor speaking at the first meeting, I had even gone to him a couple times throughout the time and asked him if there was any issues and he always said no. So I was really, really surprised to hear that. But when I did go home that evening, I did put it on my listing to please be considerate to the neighbor that lives immediately above the parking area if you're coming in late or leaving early. Loud mufflers, of course, I can't do anything about that. I don't know that I've ever, I've never heard of any, but I know how voices can carry, especially at night. So again, I put that on there right away. Parking, I'll go with parking. We do have one spot for parking. There is some grass area that I can let a second car park, but we don't want to ruin our grass, so we don't let that happen too often. Street parking, yes, is their right, they can do it. But for my guests, I just stress to them that I don't think it's safe. There is a lot of cars that go through there faster than they should be. And if anything happened to a guest, family, friend that was parking on the road, I would feel very bad. So I just suggest that they don't. Let's see what else. I think that's all. I think I covered some of the questions that you had.
So can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay. So seeing your picture, you've got your personal car parked to the left of the garage.
No, that's actually the guest parking.
That's the guest, okay. So they do have to drive through the grass to get to it?
Yes. But they're not parked on there all day, all night. It's just one, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, we park in the garage.
Okay, you're in the garage. Okay, gotcha. All righty. Yeah, so I'm a realtor also, so I just don't want you to get in trouble trying to tell you people you can't park on the public street. That was my concern to Mr. Thompson. You don't, you don't want to get yourself in a jam.
Right. I just stressed the fact that it's not safe.
Right, right. Yeah, exactly. Okay. I'm sorry. Keep going if you got more information.
I don't think I have anything else.
Any questions for the petitioner?
No, I'll just make a comment. Go ahead, do you have some?
I'm sorry. Also, your concern was, you know, what would prevent me from leasing out the top part of my home? That is our only home. I would, I would not do that. I would never plan on doing that. We moved away from Roanoke years ago and we are home to stay. That is our home for the rest of our lives and I would, I would not do that. So I know you have to either take somebody's word for it, for their word, or have maybe some kind of monitoring. Neighbors would probably start to complain if that was the case with cars coming in and out. That would be another way you would know. But for me, for my husband and I, we would not do that.
Mr. North, your comment?
Yeah, I just, I think it looks like it's a very, I would rent it out if I was looking for a place to live.
Well, thank you.
I know my son goes out of town, you know, Asheville and, I don't know, Charlotte, and they've gotten homes like this, they rent out and they think nothing of it. It's, and that's something my wife and I haven't done before, but this is a nice, nice home. I'm sure you're going to be terrible about who you rent it to. But you know something? If you're getting in and out of your car, let's say you left your car out in the driveway, you get in and out of your car at night to go somewhere, you know, you're going to close the door, it might be a noise throughout the night that gets echoed. If someone's got the window open, they're going to clearly hear it. So to me, just one of the cars, it's almost like you got a guest in your own home, more so than just renting out the bottom part of it.
Right.
Question really, from my understanding, maybe Mr. Thompson can help us with this. How does the rent that's collected, does the county ordinances, do we have any ordinances that we get X percent of the sales tax or something? Can someone speak to that, maybe?
Lodging.
Lodging? How does that fall under here?
Yeah. So obviously with a zoning permit, I'm sure they have a business license they have to get, so that will trigger the commission revenue to make sure they're collecting the right taxes associated with that.
And we, we deal strictly with Airbnb as a company. I don't do VRBO, whatever those other companies are. And they do collect occupancy tax, which they send into the county. Yeah.
That, that's, so we got a plan in place.
They automatically do that.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Delegate Hitt had a bill, bill this year trying to address who was, who's responsible for the payment of the fee. And I never did understand at all, but it passed the General Assembly, I think.
Yeah. And I, excuse me, I also have, they don't send us a 1099, but they sent us a report of what we made for us to turn it in. And I have one of those if you ever want to, you know, if you want to see one, how they report it, that kind of thing.
So if someone wants to rent this, they're going to go on Airbnb and they're going to find a listing on there and they'll go through Airbnb to make the arrangements. And then they notify you, someone's going to come in.
Airbnb does it all. They keep the calendar, they do the background check on the, the guests. I do, some guests can book without a government ID uploaded. It's up to the host to request it or put on there that they can't book until they provide that. And I always ask for that for safety. So yeah, Airbnb does it all. They collect all the payment, they collect the occupancy tax, and then they send me the balance after all the taxes.
I got you.
Yeah.
Very good.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Is there any other questions before I open the public hearing?
No, sir.
Well, at this time, I will open the public hearing. I have no one signed up to speak. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Unless somebody hasn't filled out a form.
Is there anyone who is here to speak on this matter? All right. I will now close the public hearing. And if there's any further questions to the board, then if there's not, I am open for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I think this is a good use for the property. I'm very familiar with Airbnb. I've done a lot of that myself. And I, I plan to make the motion to, to vote in favor of item K1.
I have a motion to approve item K1. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. No further discussion. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
All right. Item K2 is a petition of own, sharey hospitality.
If I could just, I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify that it is, the motion was made with the condition that was recommended by the Planning Commission.
Yes, I'll make that.
Thank you, sir.
Motion with that condition.
So item K2 is a petition of own, sharey hospitality LLC to obtain a special use permit to allow to allow a multifamily use to account for more than 50% of the gross floor area on the site of approximately 9.99 acres, Zone C2, high intensity commercial district located near the 2700 block of Wildwood Road and the 1700 block of Skyview Road, and this is in the Cataba Magistral District. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, sharee hospitality, this may look familiar because they were before you in 2020. The site is located off of Wildwood Road near exit 137 of Interstate 81. Again, as you mentioned, it's within the 2700 block of Wildwood Road, the 1700 block of Skyview Road, little, about 10 acres. They are proposing apartments, 128 in total, and the property is vacant. The site does have some topography, and so it does offer some challenges to develop the site. These are some photos that were part of the 2020 rezoning. It's up on the hill behind these homes. This is kind of the, coming off the off-ramp, looking down towards Wildwood Road, and the property's on the right. There's two different vantage points, kind of on the top one, and it's kind of looking at across from Brogan Lane is kind of where the entrance is located for the apartment complex, and this, the other direction is looking in the other direction, looking back towards the interstate. So, a little bit of background, in 2020, of August 2020, the board approved a rezoning of these 9.99 acres from AG1 to C2 for the construction of a hotel motel motor lodge for the property. In the C1 and C2 zoning districts, we do allow a multifamily use to account for up to 50% of the gross floor area on site. If you want to go above that 50%, a special use permit is required. And so in this case, it's 100% of the site is going to be used for apartments. So, kind of look at, this was the previous concept plan for the hotel, so the entrance was off of Wildwood Road, came up that bank, they had parking around the hotel, and they had a rental ballroom, and they had an undisturbed area as well, and obviously retaining walls. So, the proposed apartments, they are proposing two apartment buildings. Those are five stories in height, 64 apartments in each. Those would be split between one bedroom and two bedroom apartments. The new access road would be off of Wildwood Road. They showed 224 parking spaces, 94 on the first floor of the building, so they do have, the first floor of the two buildings is for parking. They show retaining walls, and obviously stormwater management facility, and the undisturbed area kind of shrunk a little bit to 4.1 acres, which is that property on the right-hand side of the site. Zoning, obviously it's Zone C2 now, after the August 2020 rezoning. To the north is I-1, to the east is AG1 and C2, to the west is R-1 and AG1, and then south is AG1 and obviously Interstate 81. It is core, which is a future land use area where high intensity urban development is encouraged. So actually, the proposal does not mention or is not consistent with that core designation. It was with the hotel. Public hearing on, again, the planning commission had a public hearing on May 3rd. There were seven citizens who spoke during the public hearing. Traffic was raised as an issue, increased traffic, traffic safety and accidents, and the routing off the interstate and traffic backups, and tractor trailers backing up on Wildwood Road as well. Impact on the environment, concerns over the type of housing proposed, concerns over the height of the apartment buildings, its visibility and loss of views, the entrance location, there were concerns about, questions about, several folks asked, why couldn't there be an access off of Skyview? And I think the topography map will tell you why that, it's not really feasible because of the topography. School capacity and property values were also raised. Planning commission talked about density, the traffic issues, the 220 rezoning, and the change in the project scope, the building renderings and building height, which are included in your packet. Topography, they talked about the landscape buffers in that large undisturbed area, talked about parking, stormwater management, the surrounding zoning, and the future land use designation. The planning commission did recommend approval of the special use permit with three conditions. One, substantial performance with the concept plan, that's in your packet. Two, the maximum number of apartments shall be limited to 128. And then, since they presented the renderings of the buildings, that they shall be constructed in general performance with the conceptual architectural plans for the project as well. And those are included in your packet as well. So with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have just a few things I wanted to ask Mr. Thompson. The first one is, could you just elaborate more on why the proposed special use permit is not consistent with the core future land use designation? Can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, and so, this is probably one thing that we will address in the comp plan. So number one, the core future land use designation was, was developed in 1985. It's in the 1985 future land use plan. And with it, they, if you look at the core, you know, with each land use designation, talks about the different types of land use types that would be appropriate for that, right? So it talks about general, retail shops, and personal services, office and institutional uses, and limited industrial uses. Doesn't mention housing, okay. Now, I will say that the board, over the years, and the planning commission, and you were all on it as well, sought to have more mixed use development. And so over time, we have made changes to allow this type of development in C2. Originally, when you, it was allowed, you had to have it in, it was limited to 50% and it had to be in the same building. Now it's just on site. Then we changed it where you would be able to, be able to go above the 50% with a special use permit. So I think what has happened is, we have an old future land use guide, and so, by it's, the words that are currently on it, then yes, it's not consistent. However, I think the practice has been to allow those type of uses. And I would imagine when we update the comp plan, one of the things that we will do is look at all the future land use designations and make adjustments to incorporate what the board and the planning commission have been revising over time. And I would imagine you would see, the updated version of this would have housing, multifamily housing as one of the acceptable uses. But currently, as it's currently constructed, that's why we said it's not consistent.
Understood. Just a couple more things. When I was reading through some of the traffic information, and it did mench, mention four crashes, three of which were right around the entrance or the exit of the interstate, but it said four crashes, but I didn't recall the, the timeline. Was this over two years or over 10 years, or, and that may be something that we need to come back to?
Yeah, I'll let the applicant address that.
Okay.
Especially the question about the traffic report.
Okay.
Obviously, there was, and again, I think they can speak to this, I think they plan on speaking to this, the difference, because obviously for the hotel, there was a traffic study, and how does that traffic study compare to this traffic study? I think they'll be able to talk about that.
Okay, I'll save that. I think I'll save the rest of what I've got, actually, for the applicant, too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I have a quick question, just for mine, I can't remember. So, do we rezone this in 2020?
You did.
And did we allow the hotel to be permitted?
A hotel, you, it was a C2 zoning, no Crawford conditions, so any C2 use could go in there. A hotel is a buy right use in C2.
Got you, good. Any other questions? Mr. Rad?
Yeah. Can you, for the layperson, can you explain, you've got to allow multifamily use to account for more than 50% of the gross floor area on the site on approximately 9.99 acres. Can you explain that?
I'll try to. All right, so, the intent originally for the mix is to have a mixed use, is to have a certain percentage of residential use with the same amount of non-residentials, either commercial, office, or even civic space. So like if you had, what we're trying to do here at the 419 Town Center, and you had a commercial use that had 50,000 square feet of commercial space, you could also then have 50,000 square feet of residential speed, space as well, in multifamily. So you would have, it would be a 50/50 split between the two. So that was the intent, is that, again, the original intent, I think, was to have it in the same building, now it's just on site. Now, if you want to go above that 50%, 51 to 100, we allow you to go through this process instead of rezoning it to R4 or R3, all right? It's one of the things that we tweaked and reworded several years ago because we wanted to see more mixed use projects. So, in this case, they are seeking 100%. So therefore, they are, have to get the special use permit because it's above that 50%. It's greater than 50% of the square footage on site that they want to devote to multifamily use apartments.
Is that coming from the, the core designation, or from the C2?
From the C2.
Okay, C2, thank you.
And let's, allowed that way to C1. So we've done, I don't know if you all remember, a project we did off of McVity Road with the conversion, I don't think they've done it, but it was to convert a daycare center off of that to, I think, 16 or 18 apartments, and it would do the same process. Because it was going from a commercial use and wanted the whole 100% to be apartments. So they had to go through the special use permit process. So, it's to encourage mixed use development.
Right, right. Okay.
And I, I guess I have one more question. So, and I can't get my packet to pull up, but is the traffic, will, will it not be more of an impact than it would be with the hotel?
The applicant will address that.
Who?
The applicant.
I'll.
We'll talk about the difference between the previous, they did traffic, they did the same traffic analysis with hotel, they'll talk about what the difference is between it and the hotel.
Okay.
Or it and the apartments, excuse me.
Okay. Well, I'm ready to hear from the applicant if there's any other questions.
May I?
Okay.
How are you doing?
Good evening, how are you all today?
Good.
My name is Stephen Wondra, I have an attorney in Bedford, Virginia. I'm joined today by Andrew Lumpston, he is with Lumpston Associates, he's a project engineer on behalf of the applicant, and Mr. Hussain Alum with Alum Design Group, he's a project architect and also the contractor. Basically, again, we are proposing to, I think maybe addressing some of the concern before, when we were here almost two years ago, with a general, we had a concept plan that was presented to you with the hotel, but at that point in time, there were, as Mr. Thompson has stated, there were no conditions. I think there was some concern, at least on the part of the board, that we weren't specific enough in our request. And so what we're here to do today is to offer that sort of specific proposal for your consideration today. Again, the, the planning commission has recommended the approval of this special use permit on behalf of the applicant, and the applicant is in agreement to, to those, those conditions. It specifically, as has been stated before, basically, tend to substantially comply with the concept plan by Lumpston Associates. We're not proposing to increase the number of units beyond what is in the proposal of 128. And it certainly, you can see the, the concept plan that was presented, which essentially shows the, the elevations of the building, basically just to give, give the board some ideas of what the overall project would look like. You know, again, we had previously presented a concept plan, which was, is somewhat similar to, to what is here before you today. So for example, the entrance is located in the same location as it was before, the stormwater facilities are located in a similar location. So access would again be from the same point off of Wildwood Road. I know there was some discussion, and certainly traffic is always an issue with, with any project, but really with respect to this site, I think that certainly you all will recall, the topography and the location present some significant challenges with respect to, to this particular site. So, Mr. Lumpston can certainly speak to the access, but certainly, entrance from Sky, Skyview, you have a shorter distance to go up a steeper grade, so the grade would be steeper. I believe that's an appropriate way to explain that, but I'll let, let him speak to that. You know, again, we're trying to take advantage of, and sort of incorporate some of the challenges, but also, you know, kind of take those into account. There's going to be 94 covered parking spaces, so the first, so the, the buildings themselves are going to be five stories based on the concept plan from Alum Design Group that you have with parking on the first level. And those will be covered, there's additional parking, and basically what you have present, been presented with is basically the maximum that's required by, by the ordinance. The, the units themselves will, each, each building will have a mixture of one and two bedroom apartment units. These will all be rented out at a market rate, they'll have handicap accessibility with elevators and things of that nature necessary for handicapped housing. Certainly, based on the market analysis that my client has performed, they'll provide, you know, much needed, you know, housing for, for citizens of the Roanoke County area, as well as increasing some of the tax base. I, I think that, you know, certainly to the question that probably most of you have, since you're obviously aware of our prior requests to change the zoning, is we're now here before you with, rather than a hotel, we're coming before you, I guess, with a request to do a apartment complex. And really, the, the primary reason for that is, as we've kind of gone through, I think that certainly when we were here in August of 2020, the hope and anticipation was that, I think everyone was optimistic that we were seeing, you know, improved conditions with COVID, we were looking to having vaccines being developed and things of that nature. And I think that the hope was, is that the hospitality industry would, would bounce back. And what we have discovered, and certainly sort of as we probably have all experienced, a Zoom meeting or some sort of teleconferences, that we're finding that we're, we're doing meetings differently. And, you know, so the biggest portion of that, of course, is, is business travel. We just really haven't seen, you know, that sort of rebound, and that's really sort of the reason for the request. So our, some of our key demographic would be somebody who perhaps maybe would like a home base in the Roanoke Valley, but would need to, to have easy access to, you know, the major travel arteries of Interstate 81 to, to travel. It certainly, you know, to basically maybe, you know, like a travel nurse or somebody of that sort, or somebody who's in sales who needs to travel for, over a territory to, to accommodate that. What we have found is that the occupancy for a hotel project typically is somewhere in the neighborhood of 70% versus 90 to 95% for a, an apartment complex of this type. So what that seemed to, you know, has to indicate to us that there's a far greater need for, you know, for housing of this sort. And again, this is going to be market rate, and, and Mr. Alum can speak to, you know, if you, if you all wish to do so, at least some of the finishes and things like that that potentially are being considered at this point. Again, addressing the, you know, the issue with traffic, I think Mr. Lumpston will, will speak to the fact that while there is going to be an increase in traffic for an apartment complex, obviously there are more parking spaces that are required, there is not a significant increase that's where, you know, requires an additional, you know, a turn lane or any other sort of things that are not necessarily, obviously will have, the applicant will have to comply with the VDOT standards, and certainly, traffic impact analysis is certainly a tool that is used by VDOT to determine whether a project conforms with those standards. So with that in mind, I will sort of turn the rest of this over to, to Mr. Alum and Mr. Lumpston.
Okay.
I think, to add to what's already been presented, the big picture is we have, our client is trying to do some high-end the big picture is we have, our client is trying to do some high-end, good-quality apartment units up there with a high demand for apartment housing in Roanoke, Bathard County, Roanoke City. And we, we did the market research with the client. And if you look at Retreat, Reserve, View, Downtown, all these different properties, you will find that it is, you know, 90 to 97% occupancy. And most of those apartments, they're very few one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments that are available. There are a lot of professionals that are moving to the area. Some are working remotely in IT industries, in medical industry, and, and sales, and, and marketing. And, you know, Roanoke being a place where we have the Greenways, we have Carver and Sko, we have Appalachian Trail kind of intervening through all of our towns and communities makes a perfect place to grow for people who are not from here, but desire this type of living, which we think would be something that is, as developers, as, as part of the team, we should all focus on and grow in that level of business. And it's business sensible, and it's also gives us an opportunity to, to put buildings that we know are going to be utilized and kind of comparing it to what the current zoning ordinance permits. Creating 50% commercial space that may sit empty for months and years and decades to come doesn't make sense. So if we can get a building where we can have 95, 97% occupancy all throughout the year and create more occupants for our communities that use our restaurants and go to our stores and, and invest in the growth of our community, it just makes sense all the way around. So our goal is to, to create this building, you know, with, with nice entrance coming up the drive, not, not too much light pollution, which, you know, is kind of, becomes a mark for heavy commercial development. So with residential, most people are going to go in their units, you know, six, seven, eight, nine o'clock. They're, they're winding down, getting ready for work the next day. And you don't have a lot of noise that you would have in, in a restaurant-type setting or in a commercial setting where there would be high level of traffic going in an hour if it's a, it's a bar or a restaurant. So this actually is probably less impactful for the community in terms of increased traffic and, you know, increased noise and increased disturbance for, for the residents. And we are planning to put, you know, granite countertops, nice custom cabinets, good finishes, inside and outside to create a really attractive building that hopefully will be there for next 20, 30, 40 years without much maintenance at all, and then, you know, minimal maintenance after that. A good, good building complex, similar to what we have in the area in Retreat and Reserve and Daleville Town Center and, and the View, and create something that can be part of the fabric. And there are other commercial components in, in the nearby vicinity, which adds to this fabric. So, you know, the mixed-use kind of comes from, hey, we're providing the higher-density housing, but then there are restaurants there nearby, there's retail nearby, so everybody kind of complements each other. I think I covered most of what I was going to cover, if you want to add to the traffic component.
Sure, sure. Yeah, there, there were a couple of questions that have been brought up. So I'll, I'll try to address a couple of them just right off the top, and then we can further the, the discussion if you have any additional follow-up questions for me. In terms of the, the crashes that were mentioned, there, there were four, and this was over a, a two-year span. So it's from 2020 to, to now, 2022. Of those four crashes, three of them, like, like you mentioned, were at the interchange. So it was, you know, cars turning left or, or right, but it was mainly involved with the interchange itself. The fourth one was down Wildwood Road further, further to the north. It was actually about 900 feet north of our proposed entrance, near the vacant quarry entrance. And so that's, that's the, the traffic-related crashes that were mentioned. In terms of the increase in traffic, the original traffic impact analysis that we had done for the rezoning back in 2020 was generating in the upper 40s for peak hour, traffic generated for the site. And that was for an 80-room hotel. Now that we have a 128-unit apartment facility, we are in the upper 50s. So there's between an eight to 10-vehicle increase in traffic in terms of peak hour. So it is an, an increase, but in my mind, it is not a substantial increase, especially when you compare that to the amount of traffic that's on Wildwood Road. In terms of a left and right turn lane warrants, we're, we're really not anywhere close to what VDOT would consider a warrant for a left or right turn lane for the, for the property. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer, though.
Any other questions?
I do, I do have a couple. So regarding the numbers that you just cited for the, the hotel versus the apartments, and there were more associated with the apartments, and it was maybe as many as 10 per peak hour increase with the apartments. And who establishes those numbers and where do you get these? I, I know that it's a VDOT study and all that, but who comes up with those numbers?
Yeah, there's a, there's, there's different models that you can use. The industry standard that, that VDOT accepts and most Department of Transportation is, is the, it's the acronym. It's ITE Manual, which is Institute of Traffic Engineering Manual. And what you would basically do is there's different models that, that generate a traffic volume. So for instance, our model here is, I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but it is a, it's a, it's a multifamily housing, and it's designated as mid-rise, which is, I think that's three floors and up, is how that's generated.
So thank you for that. And then I guess the, the other question I had is, I'm, I'm just curious if you have any information. I had one question about actually some VDOT vehicles that they had really noticed. They thought they were some of this speeding problem. And when I looked at the, the application and I looked at the, the plat, you could see the proposed petition, and then to the north of that, you could see the old quarry. You could also see, I think, I drove up there, so I saw where all the VDOT facility is. Do you know anything about that? Is that a permanent facility? I know it doesn't have to do specifically with the petition. Just wondering if you have that information.
Is that a question on the old quarry entrance?
So it is. And as you go up that old quarry entrance and you drive in there, there is, it appears to be a VDOT facility?
That I'm not sure of. I've, I've walked back up there. It's been probably two years since the last rezoning.
Well, it might even be. I, I feel like it's probably in connection with the construction on the interstate. I just thought you might have some of that information, since there was a question posed to me about that. So we'll move on from that. I did notice that, that according to the traffic study, there was no warrant for turn lane or tapers, that it fell well below the, that number. And on, on a completely different note, I did hear you say something about market rate, high-end, and comparing this apartment complex to the Retreat and some other high-end and nice. Do you have a number that you feel like, with the volatility of the market right now? I understand that this is an estimate, but if you were estimating the rent for the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, do you care to take a stab at that?
Sure, you know, well, certainly going to be based on what the market can command and deliver. Our client wants to be profitable based on the cost and income. But based on the current rates, if you, we did a kind of a market average on it. You, one-bedroom units are running around $1,100 to $1,300, and two-bedroom units are running $1,200 to $1,600. And then, interestingly, three-bedroom units are $1,600 as well. So there's a high demand for two-bedroom and one-bedroom. And there, and if you go to any of these facilities, there are none available. There's waiting lists for most of these facilities with one-bedroom and two-bedroom. You'll find some three-bedroom that are open because they're $50 or $75 more than, than the two-bedroom. So there's just a huge demand for that, that level. And, you know, it makes it, makes it interesting because you can buy those for that, that amount of revenue. So, you know, we all look at it and say, hey, and I personally own a couple of buildings downtown myself and downtown Roanoke, and they all stay almost 100% occupied and on Campbell Avenue. And it's kind of mind-boggling to, to see how that, you know, income and, and cost works up there. But a lot of these people are moving from Williamsburg, Northern Virginia. They're professionals. Some of them are, you know, working from home. We had one tenant that moved from Stuttgart, Germany, and was living in one of our units. And said, you know, it's a great place to kayak and bike, and, you know, we love being here. And we just Googled and we decided we'll come to Roanoke. So it's, it's a very, it's changing times. And I think if we have that type of product out here for the larger global market, it will, will bring those people. And, you know, as, as we mentioned before, you know, there was a time that hotels were really on the forefront of it because there's a lot of travel for business meetings, for people traveling so much to, to the corporations. And, and now a lot of that's done through Zoom. So families do travel, but a lot of those families, you know, stay in Airbnb and apartments and, and those kind of things. So I think we are trying to stay with the, with the curve of the change.
And you're going to focus on the one-to-two-bedroom apartments?
Yes, and we're not doing three-bedrooms. We're not looking to, to, not that they may, they will be or not be, but, you know, there certainly can be families with, with children there and, and young kids and stuff. But majority of the occupancy that we, we find are younger professionals, couples, some elderly professionals that, you know, are in their 50s and 60s and, and like, you know, we're kind of becoming a, a very charming town with, you know, Ironman happening up here and a lot of different activities. And so it, it certainly kind of complements that, where we, we have a lot of the younger population that likes that lifestyle that Roanoke can provide. And they like those type of neighbors, you know. A lot of our tenants actually ask us, hey, hey, who's, who's living in the building, you know? What kind of people are there? And I think that becomes kind of a hallmark for, for our establishment. And that's what our client wants to do, too, is, is encourage professionals and younger professional, middle-aged professionals and, you know, retirees to be there and create a nice place. And we also plan to have a little, you know, community center there for our residents in there, i.e. a pool or.
I was just going to ask about the amenity. There's a place designated as amenity.
Yes. And the goal is to have a, you know, possibly a pool and, and a clubhouse where they can have community events. Maybe, you know, have a, have a screen where they can watch a movie. And you can see that in Retreat, and Daleville Town Center's done a really good job, and Reserve's done a really good job with that. Have a, have a nice little small movie theater that can hold 15, 20 people in the basement and have a place up there where they can have birthday parties and, and have their community events. So, so it's, it's a nice place where the neighbors come and kind of enjoy it. You know, a nice view from the top of the mountain and looking at the valley and everything that goes around.
I don't have any other questions at this time.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yeah, thank you. Welcome. You, you too. Are you planning to, I know you're going to sprinkle the garage. You're going to sprinkle the other, the other four floors?
I think we'll look at certainly, you know, the, the cost benefit of it and, and the building codes, which, which building type and, you know, perimeter accessibility, anything we're going to go with. And I was actually just telling our client that sometimes it makes more sense to sprinkle it because your, your, the insurance cost goes down in longer term. It gives you benefit even if it's not required. So certainly would be our intention if, if the, if the cost benefit works. And I think one of the challenging part of this project is it, it does have a lot of saved costs, you know, steep hill, like.
So, so what I'm getting at is do you, do we have adequate fire flow there, Andrew? Do you know?
I don't have that information off the, off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we would need to do some fire, we need to reach out to the fire marshal. I mean, he, he's reviewed our package and doesn't have any concerns.
Okay.
We do know that the domestic pressures that we've taken a look at are within reasonable range, you know, to serve a five-story building. But as far as fire flow, I, I don't have that information available.
Okay. How do y'all, how are you going to handle trash? You're on the fourth floor. How are you going to handle the trash? I'm just kind of thinking of just technical things. I'm just trying to get this information while, while we can. What do y'all plan to do?
Yeah, that's a good point. You know, I, I think certainly you're at that point where you start to get taller by a lot of three, four-story buildings. As long as you have a dumpster enclosure on the property, people bring their trash and put it in the dumpster.
So y'all, y'all provide, okay, very good.
We'll definitely have a dumpster enclosure up there because we want to be able to haul that off.
That's not on the, on the site plan, is it, though?
It's not currently shown.
Okay.
We'll, we'll certainly plan to do that.
That's why, that's good. Stormwater, Andrew. I, I think I asked this question before. You're going to put it on the ground or you're going to put it in a pond?
It's likely going to be in a pond. And if you're looking at the site, near the entrance, there's a, a low-line area. We have it labeled as stormwater management area.
Right.
So that, that seems to be the likely choice. There's also a small stream that comes off from the, the quarry area.
I see it.
Yeah, so we, so we would detain an above-ground pond and then discharge into that stream.
Okay. So exterior finish, I didn't quite hear what that was going to be?
Combination of brick and maybe some cement siding or hardy stucco combination. You know, permanent finishes. We're not planning to put any vinyl products on it.
Okay. The, a lot of our apartment complexes have started off as apartments, and then they get condoed. Are you going to prepare this for potential being condoed and sold one day? Like individual meters, like individual meters, water meters?
That's a good question. I think there's a, generally a pretty high cost for doing some of those meters and, and separate. And we'll certainly, you know, work with the client to see if that's something they want to consider. If the cost benefit works for them, that's certainly a good idea to do that.
I didn't know if that, Phillip, I didn't know that got in the way of our C2 zoning.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Talked about lighting. You, I'm sure you know about dark-skylighting. Okay. Amenity areas, you already answered that. I think that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Anything else? Okay.
I just will comment on it. I'm kind of glad to see some more apartments being built, which you are, it is true, there's high demand and waiting lists. But I will tell you this, you're going to have a challenge up on that hill with access during inclement weather periods. And I hope you don't run into any rock up there, because if you do, that's going to be a challenge as well. So good luck with that.
Yeah, I, I do have one more thing. Yeah, I, I saw your, your pictures, Alum, and have you guys thought about putting that first floor underground, garage underground? Looks like your picture is, is on top of ground, or have you even thought about that, gotten that far? For the grading, or is it just skeptical, conceptual right now?
I don't think we really looked at the possibility of that. I think we were, we're at that stage that we, we're certainly considering one thing with Phillip's office. If there's a possibility to reduce the parking requirement for the project, which would help in many different ways. And, you know, Roanoke City and, and City of Salem, they, they provide certain, their ordinance permits some parking reductions if you're on a bus route, or, you know, if you have other community parking up there. So parking is certainly a burden up here on this project. We are required to have one and a half parking space for one apartment, one-bedroom apartment, and two parking spaces for, for two bedrooms. So that's how we get the 224 parking spaces, which is, you know, very, very sizable. And, you know, we have found out in a lot of our buildings and properties that we've worked with before, you end up having a huge amount of empty parking lot. a huge amount of empty parking lot for these buildings. And, you know, Roanoke County is certainly open to us providing them a study of how that dynamics is actually working out in real time in the reserve and Dalewood Town Center and some of the other communities. And if you're able to reduce that, you know, it would be certainly our desire to have four story buildings if we can get to that point and minimize, minimize the impact, vertical impact of it. There'll certainly be less cost for our client and all that. The only downside to kind of keeping that parking underground below it and bringing this down, you end up having a lower structure that would need specialized drainage and, you know, heavy storm mitigation. And certainly the cost goes up with walls that are built around it. So the cost measures for anything this size plays a big role. And in the ideal world, what we would like to have is less parking, four story building, if we can work with the zoning office.
Any more questions? Okay. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Thompson?
Not right now, Mr..
Okay. Then at this time, I will move to the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. I should have done this earlier, but if there's anyone who would like to speak tonight, there's one of these that sat on the table-
It's in the lobby.
-that needs to be filled out before you, before you speak. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for this, for this applicant. I have one person sign up to speak. And I'd like to welcome Frank Francisco to the podium. You do have three minutes to speak. If you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Frank Francisco, 2058 Wildwood Road. That's about around Wildwood. You go from the 37 exit down to Academy Street in Salem. It's three miles long. And I live halfway between. It's like a horseshoe. And if anyone's ever traveled Wildwood, you'll know that it's full of curves, blind spots on hills, things like that. And I'm here to speak to the safety and welfare of the people that live on Wildwood Road. We, we have a speed limit of 35 miles an hour there. In one section coming just above me, there's 20 mile speed limit because you come down a hill and people live down at the bottom. And that's not enforced. We very seldom see a police officer around Wildwood unless it's some other issue besides traffic control. And the street is yellow lines, double level lines, no, no passing. And from one shoulder to the other shoulder, it's 20 feet. With the yellow line going through the middle of it, you only have nine and a half feet for your lane of travel. This is my concern. And I've been out and I've taken traffic counts myself. And every three minutes, you've got a car or truck or something traveling either east or west on Wildwood. And with the increase of traffic, which is proposed by these people, that it's going to be 128 apartments, you figure two cars per apartment more than likely. That's the way it goes here lately with people working. And that's going to really put a lot of congestion on Wildwood Road. With the blind spots on Wildwood, we have a lot of bikers that come around Wildwood. And you, once you pass the entrance, top entrance too, where they used to get shelved with a brick company, that's the only straight stretch you've got from there on. You've got curves, up hills, and your blind spots. And you cannot pass these bicyclists. And they ride sometimes side by side. And that's a mall. They can do that now. But the thing that bothers me is you'll get behind them and you will not get, be able to pass them safely for their sake and their sake. In three quarters of miles of straight stretch there at a church, that you can safely pass them. And then you go on down the road, you come into a curve. It's not a 90 degree, but it's an 80 degree. And Mr. Brown, who lives there in his house, has put up rocks to keep people from coming into his house. This is not a real safe road to increase traffic like it's going to be increased if these people get their way. And I'm concerned about that. And, and that's the reason I'm here. And I'm concerned about the bicyclists. They have the right, they love to come around Wildwood Road because it's a beautiful sight, but yet their safety is not in their best interest when you think about it. So my concern is for the, for you people to think about, if you've ever been around Wildwood Road, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about as far as the curves and the blind spots you have there. And like I said, I've sat out there and every three minutes, I count be here going east or west. And with this increase coming up, it's going to be a lot worse because people are not going to come down like they think to 81 or West Main because West Main is overcrowded as it is. You can't hardly get through West Main anymore. So they'll be coming around Wildwood Road with that many other people that, that will be traveling. And it'll be unsafe for a lot of folks that live out there. And it's not safe for them as far as I'm concerned. And I think I made my point about the safety.
Yep. I need you to wrap up. You're two minutes over.
Well, I'm two minutes over?
Yes, sir. Three minutes goes by fast.
Okay. Well, anyway, I've lived there 80 years. I've been on the police department in Salem, retired in 91 with 32 year service. So I know a little bit about traffic control.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak on this petition?
My name is Brittany Connor. I live on Brogan Circle. We just moved here about 18 months ago from Florida.
Thank you.
And we moved here because we love the area. Our house came with a chicken coop and we have since added to it some goats and dogs. And we just love the lifestyle out there on that road. And I'm in agreement with these other people who have spoken that I want to keep it that way. And my concern, I have heard what they said, that they intend to build nice apartments with marble finishings and things like that. And, you know, I'm sure the Howard Johnson that's up on Skyview probably started out as a nice building. But if you've driven past it lately, it looks very dilapidated, very neglected. My understanding is that Om Shri has gone by many names and that they have several apartment, not apartment, hotel complexes within the row in Ogeria. Some of them are very infamous for their state at the moment. One of them, Knights Inn, has a tarp on the building and it's been there for a while. My concern is, it sounds great that we're going to start building this nice apartment complex with marbles and trying to attract professionals and things like that. But what is the guarantee that that's the finished product? And what is the guarantee that it's going to maintain value, not only for the apartment that they're constructing, but for the people around it? What we don't want is an apartment building built that is going to quickly run down, is going to quickly look like the Howard Johnson, dilapidated and neglected. And soon that nice professional clientele leaves and we're left with people who are unsavory, who don't necessarily want to come and see our community as a community. I've already had police in my backyard because they were trying to track down meth cookers. I don't even know what they're called. Meth people that happened to have set up camp behind us. And I'm concerned that an apartment building by Om Shri, who does not seem to have a very reputable track record at the moment, especially among police officers in Roanoke County, that we're just going to see an increase of that type of residents in that area. And I've got children and I just, that's not what I want for this area. We wouldn't have moved here had we known that was the plan.
Thank you. Robert Cornet?
Well, I live fairly close by on Cum Springs Road, my, with my wife. And our concerns are a whole lot what you heard from this lady. There's going to be, I think, a lot more traffic. I mean, I don't know how much 10 automobiles per hour. Is that what you, that what the figure was I was hearing? 10 per hour peaks?
I think it was about 50 or so. And they were comparing it to the hotels. And so it was about 10 more per hour higher than the hotels.
Okay. Well, that makes sense to me. Because I thought, well, that doesn't sound like it would be like what you'd expect for an apartment building. Because with apartments, unless it's just, I didn't hear how many single apartments, single bedrooms and double bedrooms? What was the ratio on that, you know?
We don't, we don't have that.
64 each.
64 each.
Yeah, that, you know, if it was two and three bedrooms, I might feel better. But I think not too much. The, when you go from the hotel that's closest to us on Cum Springs, when you stop there, that's where, well, four lanes stops, you know, next down. And then all of a sudden, you're on a two lane road. And that's where this apartment building's going to be. That entrance is going to be on a two lane road.
Essentially.
And it's up inside where the residential area is. It's not, that, that's a completely different animal. Once you get up where, to my mind, Brogan Lane comes out and it's like a launch pad, you know, it just, it's very difficult to come out of there safely. And then if we're going to have that much more traffic, and I, when you're getting ready to go to work or something, the same people that, maybe somebody's going to work from the apartment houses. And if they're not doing that, they may be going to the grocery store or that kind of thing when you're coming home and when you're leaving to go to work. I just, I'm not, but even that, the traffic safety is not as much a concern for us as our property values. Because, yeah, I know that's not, that's not a big concern for anybody except us. But we're very concerned about that. And I know where I, where I'm living, the whole neighborhood, everybody's last name was Hill. And I married into them. And so there's one Cornet there. But everybody else has that property because it was inherited from a great grandfather. And he owned a lot of that property. And they, they don't want to pick up and move. And I've moved enough times in my life. I don't want to move. But having something where if the crime is going to go up farther than what it's been increasing already, I don't want to live there. And I don't know, I just, I can't imagine that generations are going to want to stay there either. If the, the property values drop off, it would seem the most reasonable thing to do is get out before it goes down. And I don't think that would be a very nice thing. Everybody's happy there with the situation that we have, more or less. We'd been happier if we didn't have quite so many hotels nearby. But life has to go on. I understand that. But we don't have to have an apartment building in our neighborhood. I don't mean to sound, I'm not a snooty guy, okay? I lived in an apartment a couple of times. I don't, I don't mean anything like that. But I do mean that we like peace and quiet. We don't like people coming stealing stuff out of our yard or that kind of thing. And it happens enough now. So I don't want to see it go up. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's all I have for this petition. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. And to have any further questions of the board.
Would like the, I don't have any questions, but I'd like the petitioner to have an opportunity to answer some of these.
Would the petitioner like to come back up?
I guess I'll just respond. You know, my client doesn't own any sort of commercial properties or any residential properties in Roanoke County. So I'm not necessarily sure what was specifically referred to with respect to, you know, this particular client and some other project. What I can say from my experience as an attorney representing primarily landlords is certainly the way, I think, to be, you know, there's a number of things that I tell prospective landlords and landlords in general to, to be successful. Everybody wants to, to have their property occupied. They want to make sure that they collect the rent that they charge. And probably the biggest way to do that is to maintain your building. People are less likely to pay rent if their property is not maintained. Usually that's the first thing typically when I get into court and I'm arguing with, with a tenant who's not paid rent, usually that's when the complaints start as to what the landlord has not done. And, and so I think that, to sort of speak to that in general, that I think that, you know, the, the idea is to essentially have, you know, an exterior and an interior which is, you know, easily maintained. But certainly, the goal would be to keep that up. Because, you know, again, we're talking about charging a market rate and keeping that market rate. So I think that certainly would be the objective in sort of doing this development. I certainly don't think that the desire is to, is to have something that, you know, becomes rundown. And I think that certainly our goal in this whole project is to get something that's attractive for the community, that supports the community.
Yeah. And I'll add to your point. Om Shri is, in Hindu culture, is the name of God. It's another name in, in the Sanskrit language. So there might be some other businesses that some of the, some of the people mentioned. But our client don't have any hotels in the community. They don't have any in, in the region. The closest hotel they have is in Holiday Express in Tennessee. They do have gas stations and some stores in Bedford, Lynchburg, Rocky Mountain. And then they have a land on, off exit 132. But I think from the, from the business end of it, we all know that they're, they're working with different lenders on it. So they're going to have financing on this thing for 15 years, you know. And the, the investors who are going to be the different banks in here or a bank that's trying to finalize, is certainly going to like them to keep their building up to, to speed. They're going to like to keep their building up to speed because they want to make money and they want to rent. And they're a very successful business owner, you know, investing to the tune of 16 to 18 million dollars in Roanoke County to develop this piece of land. So when you're putting that kind of revenue into development, as you mentioned, you know, cutting a bench off Topham Mountain, which may hit rock and doing, you know, reinforced concrete and steel and beautiful windows and granite countertops and hardwood floors, you're not going to let it run down. You're not going to let 16 to 18 million dollar property fall apart. So they're certainly going to do their due diligence to keep this looking as good as possible, build it as well as possible. As a team, all of us are going to do that. And, and, you know, unless the whole area is the- And, and, you know, unless the whole area, the economy runs down and people stop coming to this type of business and these type of apartments and the market dynamics change, there's no reason for this to fall apart. And I think we, as a community of, of business people, we all have to realize that things change in our communities. You know, we, we used to have parking garages all across Canada, United States. Now, as architects, we are all over the country are designing them, converting them into apartments. And believe it or not, these are apartments that are terraced on ramps because you have all these structures that are empty in Boston and New York, and they can't get any revenue. You've got these big, huge steel-concrete structures, so they're not going to let them just fall apart. But, you know, there's a time, it takes five, 10 years. There are malls all across Midwest and Canada, United States that they're converting into apartments because people are not going shopping in the malls. So, but there are more people living, living at home, enjoying their homes, enjoying their offices and community spaces. So I think we have to see the reality of it. And we, we are not going to put commercial spaces on these properties anymore. They're going to sit empty like many of them in Roanoke County and Roanoke City and, and different places. So we just have to kind of accept that reality and, and do the best we can to be ready for that type of change. And I think we're certainly hoping that it brings the value of the community up, it brings the value of the real estate up, and it brings good people that, you know, maybe, and we see that all the time in, in the apartments that we own and our clients. And, you know, these people come in and they, for a year or two, they'll be a resident at, at Lewis Gale or Carillion or a nurse. And then, you know, they'll meet somebody and two or three years they're tenants, and then they buy a house. And then they, they come back to the community and stay there for another four or five years. So they become part of our fabric and kind of help us all grow and prosper more in, in essence.
Questions?
I just have one quick question. I was wanting to speak to some of the traffic concerns on, on Wildwood Road. And I was looking at the traffic study. And for it to really impact the, you know, the more rural area of Wildwood, they would need to be turning right out of the complex. And so I was looking at the, at the traffic study, and if I'm reading this correctly, in the AM peak hour, there are 17 cars that may turn right. I just wanted you to, to speak to that.
Yeah, you're, you're certainly headed on the right track. And, and how that's developed is, is we use that, the, the Traffic Transportation Engineering Manual to come up with the total traffic that will be generated by the apartment complex. Then from there, we use some data that is supplied by, by BDOT, and they supply it yearly for Wildwood Road. So for instance, there is a, there's a, there's a peak hour percentage, which that then teases down the volume to the peak hour. And then we can also tease down which direction the traffic will be going by using a directional factor. So Wildwood Road has about 75% of the traffic in the peak hour headed into town and 25% headed away. So that's, that's how we develop those numbers.
I'd like to hear from my other board members.
Again, I said earlier, we need more housing. Housing study done recently at the request of Allegany Regional Commission pointed in that direction. If we're going to grow our population, if we're going to improve our economy, we have to have suitable housing. From what I've heard today, it seems to be that this would be a suitable project. And it is true a problem, you can run into rock, not mine. And, you know, I'm not going to lose any sleep over that. But I think we all need to understand that there are good projects and there's projects that need some more attention, but we need more housing in this area. And I think we're losing a lot of people who are leaving the area for jobs elsewhere. There's a lot of people that want to come to the area and they need places to stay and live. And this is just another alternative in this marketplace. So I think this is a good idea. I don't, wouldn't worry too much about the traffic. When I moved down here years ago, from Washington DC in 1983, people used to say, oh, the rush out here is, is terrible. The locals used to say that. And I used to go to and from my apartment in Oak Grove downtown Roanoke in 20 minutes. And by the way, I lived in an apartment too. And it, those apartments are still standing today and well-kept. So I'm sure this one will be too. The point is, is that we have got to have more housing or we're going to lose population. And we lose population, we lose economy. We lose economy, we lose revenues, and we're not able to continue to provide the services we do to all our citizens in this area. So I think it's going to be a little pain in the beginning, but I think it's going to smooth out, be smooth sailing in the long run. That's all I've got to say.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with Mr. North. And I like the, the one and two bedrooms. Our studies are showing the same thing. And I think the younger clientele are going to demand a lot more. I know the plans that, that you've drawn, Hassan, are very basic, but you, you've, you guys got to throw a lot more goodies in it to keep those rates up. You need a trash chute. I mean, that, that's basic, just things that I'm seeing. I don't see a front door. So Phillip, we're not approving the building plan, just the concept plan, right?
Correct.
Okay. Right. So, you know, there's a lot of things you can do on the, on the building plan. I think it will attract those, those younger folks. You know, places to exercise and the gathering area. You need a front door to, to see a front door in your plan. But we, we definitely need it. Our, our country is just looking for housing. I mean, I'm still getting tons of calls. I have rental units myself in town, Christiansburg. They stay rented 100% of the time. And I, I rerent them within an hour. They, they go like that. And I'm already up past your rental rates. So I think just, you know, design a good product, put a lot of amenities into it, make it look attractive other than a rectangle, and I think you'll be okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments?
I don't have any other comments at this time.
All right. At this time, I will open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm really, I'm struggling with this issue because I hear the concerns of the community and I, I wish I could alleviate all of the concerns. I do believe that the concern with the traffic going deeper into the Wildwood area is not as significant as they may fear. I also believe that this quality of renter is not going to deliver some of the concerns with some of the nefarious activities that may have been mentioned. I, I heard the concern about maybe some other properties that are not well-kept, and it is my understanding that there is no relationship with this petitioner. And I, and I checked on that prior also. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. And that motion is that I find that the proposed special use permit meets the requirements of section 30-19-1 of the Roanoke County Code and that the proposed special use conforms with the standards set forth in Article Four, Use and Design Standards of the Roanoke County Ordinance. While not in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan's future land use designation of corps, the proposed use will meet the need for available housing that currently exists in Roanoke County and will have minimal adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. I therefore move that we approve the petition to obtain a special use permit with the following conditions. The site shall be developed in substantial conformance with a concept plan titled Exhibit A, prepared by Lumston and Associates, dated March 1, 2022, subject to any changes required during the site plan review process. The maximum number of apartments shall be limited to 128. And the apartment buildings shall be constructed in general conformance with the conceptual and architectural plans titled Conceptual Plans for Om Shri Hospitality LLC, prepared by Alum Design Group, dated March 10, 2022, subject to any changes required during the building permit review process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, would you call them all?
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. Noor?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Thank you. We will now take a five-minute break. We'll be back here at 8:35.
Thank you.
The suspected shooter is dead.
Welcome back. We ran over just a little bit on our break, but we're back and we're moving on to item. Yeah, we are.
Item next.
K three. The petition of Zaya Reinhardt and Gavin Reinhardt to obtain a special use permit in a AR agricultural residential district. For a special events facility on approximately forty-two point zero eight acres located at twenty-eight seventy-five Timberview Road. And the twenty-four hundred block of Lock Haven Road, excuse me, Lock Haven Drive. And this is also in the Catawba Magistral District. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, let's talk a little bit about a special event facility. It's defined in our zoning ordinance as a place, structure, or other facility. Used for the assembly of or intention of attracting people for cultural ceremonial. Celebratory purposes or civic clubs for which there is a leasing fee. Such assembly includes but is not limited to anniversary and birthday celebrations, reunions, weddings, and receptions. We get this a lot. Music concerts or festivals as a primary use shall be considered an outdoor gathering and not a special event facility. We do allow it by with a special use permit in our ag districts. There are certain use and design standards. It has to be on a publicly owned and maintained street. So it has to front on a public street. Outdoor noise is refers to the section that would apply under the noise ordinance. And then in the AR district, you got to have a minimum of ten acres to be able to apply for a special use permit. A little zoning background. This has been, this is the third time around before you all. This originally was submitted last year and there was a public hearing in February second by the planning commission. So they had a public hearing on the original request and the planning commission recommended approval. You all had a public hearing at the end of February of last year. Voted to postpone action to allow the applicant to explore alternative access. They brought some of those alternatives back to you in a meeting in June and then you postponed. Action until access could be achieved from Lock Haven Drive. Again, with how it works from a timing standpoint, you have a year from the original date of when the application was submitted. They requested an extension which was granted. And so then as part of this application, we did have a community meeting where we mailed, I think, a hundred and ninety something. Notice this out to everyone off of Timberview and off of Lock Haven Drive. And we had a community meeting. We had sixteen citizens attend. And so on this application. So kind of get you oriented on the site. It is off of Timberview Road. They have included a couple of parcels that front off of Lock Haven. It's, you see where it's kind of in general location near I eighty-one and five eighty-one, just to the north of that. Again, so there's three parcels. Originally, the original application was just the thirty acre parcel owned by the Reinhardts. But so the total acreage with all three parcels is forty-two point oh eight acres. They are proposing a special event facility and there is existing home on the property. Again, this will show the existing entrance off of. Timberview Road. You can see the gates that are there and that'll be part of the discussion as we move forward. The existing house, again, this is their existing parking area to the adjacent of the house, adjacent to the house. So a little bit different is they are showing. A grass field that they're going to use for parking. You can see it's fairly level, which is off to the left-hand side of that previous picture. And then they are, as part of the proposal, have an access road that will tie into Lock Haven Drive. So this is that parking area going up the hill. This kind of looks back towards the house. So they have a part of an existing road that they use and would come through their fields. The property on the left-hand side, as you move further down, would get you down to Lock Haven. Off of Lock Haven Road, I think there's an existing gas utility area. So that's where they would use that, the same access. And here's kind of a view of that. Kind of access road to that gas facility, pumping center station. They would just continue off of this to tie into their property. Several photos of the interior of the home. These are from the previous application. They will utilize the existing gym for majority of the weddings and receptions. And then the racquetball court is going to be changed in the restrooms, catering, prep, and storage. So if you look at the new concept plan, they do have an access off of Lock Haven Drive. You did see the picture off of Timberview, which is the distant driveway with gates. And then there's this new access road through two properties and then on their property as well. The existing home is about fourteen, almost fifteen thousand square feet. Existing gymnasium is about forty-two hundred square feet. That's the proposed chapel and reception area. Existing racquetball court as well, about fifty-one hundred square feet. And they do have a new access road from Lock Haven. They do have a proposed grass parking area. They also show on there an optional outdoor venue with tents as a possibility, or they may do it around the house as well. And then if needed, they do have, potentially may use restroom trailers if there's an outside use. Foreplan again is taken from the previous application, but it is a continuation of this. Their foreplan showing the seating and then what that might look like, rendering on the inside. And then from the reception. And what that would possibly look like as well. Existing zoning, it's zoned, all three parcels are simply AR, agricultural residential. AG three to the north, AR and AG three to the east, to the west, again, AR and AG three. And to the south, it's AR and then it's PTD across I eighty-one. And that's the Woodhaven technology park property. Rural preserve and transition are the two future land uses. And again, rural preserve is a future land use area of mostly undeveloped outlying lands. The request for a special use permit to operate special events facility is consistent with the rural preserve, future land use designation. It's also transition, which encourages the orderly development of highly furnished parcels. Again, it allows for some retail uses as well in that area on a smaller scale and coordinated retail uses. So it is also consistent with the transition, future land use designation. They held a public hearing. The planning commission held a public hearing on May third. There was one citizen who spoke during the public hearing. And there were some concern raised over the special user permit condition dealing with restricting access off of Timberview Road. Including all activities, servicing, maintenance, support services, and similar activities, both before and after events was the concern. Planning commission discussed buffers, the community meeting, the limit on attendees. Building code sprinkler system easement across the Western Virginia Regional Industrial Facilities Authority property. Those are the two other properties as part of this. The special use permit conditions, the parking area and access off of Lock Haven Drive. So the planning commission did recommend approval of the special use permit for a special events facility with five conditions. The first one being the revised concept plan, being general performance with that plan. Second one deals with access during the operation of special events, including access for guests, venue staff, catering staff, entertainment staff, and other staff should only be from Lock Haven Drive. During special events, the access from Timberview Road shall be closed with gates, which you saw those gates on the photos. Third one is dealing with a row of large evergreen trees shall be placed along the eastern property line from the existing vegetation by the existing tennis court, southward to the existing vegetation. South of the proposed parking area. Again, planted six feet tall when planted and spaced twenty feet apart from center. Four, any outdoor portable restroom shall be screened from public view. And five, the number of guests, or the number of people attending each event shall be limited to two hundred and fifty guests excluding staff. And with that, I don't think any questions that you may have.
So Mr. Thompson, can you go back to that prior screen? So under item two. Can you tell me what you mean by the gate should be closed? Does that mean it's somehow locked? Or is it just, just closed?
So they're going to, my understanding is they're going to have it closed, but they would have it available for emergency services. So obviously, if there's an emergency event and somebody needs to get there and they're not, yeah, they're going to allow, you know, obviously have access to that.
That's what I want to make sure. I want to make sure it's not a locked gate because again, I just believe, you know, that kind of venue. For fire rescue, police purposes, they need to have access from any point they can get to.
I'll let them touch on it again, but the intent is it's closed so that no guests arrive that way. If there is an emergency event, it obviously could be open for that. You want the shortest distance in saving, you know, life as well, so.
Questions?
Yes, sir. So just a couple of quick ones for staff. This has been quite the process for the Reinhardts. It's a beautiful property. And I've had several questions from the community with, you know, as we set these standards, how do we? As we were talking about in another petition earlier tonight about how do we hold them accountable to make sure that all those things are, are held to or the standards are where they should be? And I just want you to help me reiterate, Mr. Thompson, on, on all the processes that they'll have to go through. They'll have to go through the health department. As they're getting a business license, there will be a process where they have to meet approval. The building safety, they'll have to go through some processes with that.
Yes.
And then will they go back to fire and rescue again?
So what will happen is obviously there'll probably be a site plan that's prepared, which is kind of close to what they have. It'll either be a site plan or plot plan that gets reviewed. They'll review agencies, the fire department, building, office of building safety is part of that, as well as other. You know, other departments. They'll have to get a permit from VDOT for the access off of Lock Haven. Right? Obviously, the grading of that road and development of that road, I imagine there's some erosion sediment control reviews as well as stormwater. They'll have to look at that as well. Obviously, the building, any renovations to the building will go through, you know, that submit change of use for that portion of that they're going to use. Which is the building permit process. They'll have to meet the Virginia, you know, building code that are appropriate. You know, if there are things that they don't meet, that they don't have to meet, you know, there are certain thresholds for sprinkling of system.
Sure.
They will have to meet those standards, but nothing above those standards. So there's that review. So there's a site plan review, building review, obviously environmental reviews as part of those processes. As you mentioned, if they have, you know, business license, they would get that through the commercial revenue. So again, like any use that's allowed, and this is a special use. There are conditions, and they violate those conditions. And I imagine there's a pretty active citizenry on this road. That we will hear of that, right? And we will investigate and, you know, if, again, it's like anything, a special use permit can be revoked. It's rare. But again, these people are trying to run a business.
Absolutely.
And anything that detracts from that or takes away from that, it's not in their best interest.
Yeah, and I just, I think my point was just that there's still a lot of accountability and process to go through. And that I feel like there's going to be a lot that they're going to have to adhere to. And I just wanted to assure the citizenry of, as far as, you know, things like health department or fire and rescue and the building safety with. Respect to sprinkling and all those things. All of those things will be visited and rectified and, and they'll meet those standards.
And you also have to remember, they're also going, they have an easement, a variable with easement across somebody else's property.
Right.
If they're not doing what they need to do, there's that other property involved as well. So they need to satisfy that as well. And I think it's kept fairly flexible because obviously is the industrial facility's property, if they need to, you know, change the location at times because of something else in the future, they would do so. So again, there are lots of checks and balances that are in place to ensure that what they're proposing is going to be what they.
Right. And we already have a noise ordinance. I know that there was some concern about that. I feel like that's taken care of. And so I, I'm comfortable with going forward, hearing from my board members if they have questions as staff, but I'm ready to go forward, Mr. Chairman.
The board, just one quick question, and Mr. Radford's got some. How long is that proposed road off Lock Haven?
That's a good question. Do you all know how long?
How much? It's a half mile.
Half mile.
Half mile. And how will it be constructed? Is it going to be crushed run gravel or is it going to be?
It's on there. It's on here.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's going to be gravel. It's going to be a gravel road. I think the, the industrial facilities authority didn't want it to be paved because if they had to relocate it or dig, they didn't want, they wanted to be flexible to make it easier to, if they had to construct anything on site, to be able to do that.
Right. I got you. Thank you.
Mr. Radford.
You know, I've got questions I really want to ask the property owner. So when that is available.
Would the petitioner like to come forward?
They are here.
Petitioners.
They have, I think, a presentation as well.
Do you have questions for me or for the boys?
For the boys, I assume.
Whoever wants to be the spokesperson.
They're the petitioner?
Well, what I would say is I think they have a presentation. Let them do their presentation. Maybe I have your question.
Perfect. Yes. That'd be great.
Debbie, Debbie.
We've seen this presentation before. We've seen this before. Wow.
Hi, my name is Brianna Reinhardt and I've put together a brief presentation just to give you guys more information about the proposed venue. So the first slide showcases the front of the house. You know, there was a family wedding that was held here back in October of twenty twenty. Just a visual of what a sample would look like. You guys have already seen the outline numerous times of the property. But you can see that, you know, it is surrounded. Mostly by trees and habitation. These are the neighbors that have voiced their support for the venue on all of the starred locations. So pretty much surrounding the entirety of the property. And we have also received numerous letters from our adjoining neighbors and local business owners. Who approve of us offering our home as a wedding venue. And these letters from the business owners were submitted with the paperwork. You did see this earlier, but this is just showcasing the new entrance through Lock Haven Road where the green arrow is. And then the road going through the property to the proposed parking area. Once approved, we will work with the necessary entities to make sure that the construction of the entrance at Lock Haven fulfills all of the requirements with regards to. Visibility, distancing, signage, and so on. Another example of the proposed driveway and how it crosses through the different properties. Where would the guests stay? There are four hotels about seven minutes away. And the Hotel of Roanoke is about sixteen minutes away. And this is just those pictures again of ceremony and reception areas. And this is a picture from that wedding back in October of twenty twenty. This is a picture of. Of one of the co-owners of the venue, Zaya Reinhardt and his fiancee Haley. This is the back area of the venue. So you can see how heavily wooded it is and the views that it provides. So what we are looking to offer is an upscale venue with indoor and outdoor accommodations for up to two hundred and fifty people. There are limited options for this in North Roanoke that offer indoor areas for large gatherings. So our venue would bring a much-needed choice. We will also have flexibility in our pricing for guests to help them choose what is best for them. And this variety allows more people to be able to afford the venue, which leads to more exposure and business for the area, which in turn brings in more tax revenue. And I found some statistics. Virginia was ranked eleventh out of fifty states for the number of weddings. And with Virginia already being an ideal location for weddings, we aim to make Roanoke an enticing choice for those who choose to get married in the state. I updated my data from the last time I did this presentation. With the twenty twenty-one national average cost of a wedding was twenty-eight thousand dollars. Virginia was higher at thirty-two thousand dollars. So if we did only twenty-six weekends a year, that would bring in eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars of yearly revenue to Roanoke County businesses. And if we did forty weekends a year, that would bring in one million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of yearly revenue. To those local Roanoke County businesses such as photographers, florists, catering, you know, event planners, the restaurants, the hotels. A lot of these businesses that were hurt during the COVID era. We've already seen that it aligns with the Roanoke County's plan for economic development. Because it supports the economic development goals to increase the tax base and employment. While providing high-quality amenities to residents and visitors. Also supports the region's tourism industry and to help our economic growth. I looked at the notes from different people and from fire and rescue, they said it would not adversely impact the services that they provide. And once we go through the site plan review process, they would address any applicable fire flow or access requirements later on. It's also in conformance with the Roanoke County Community Plan, the land use designations. And what is it? Thank you, Retina. Do you have any questions?
So I was just going to ask a quick question regarding the gate. It's a beautiful gate.
It's a beautiful gate as you come into the property. And I would assume that that is not routinely locked, that it is, uh, probably closed maybe when the, um, family wants privacy or just extra security.
Yeah, yeah, it can be closed, you know, if you go on vacation or at different times.
But I was meeting some resistance with locking it just because it was seen as, um, as a safety hazard for Fire and Rescue to come to the property.
Correct.
But, um, but just wanted to check in with that, that that will be closed so that people won't inadvertently come that way during any event.
Correct.
And then the other thing I wanted to ask, too, regarding stationary advertisements, business cards, I would assume that they would all carry the Lock Haven address on them and that it will be advertised that way. I think that's all I have for right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Radford?
Yeah. So the, uh, this might be a question for Mr. Thompson behind you, but, uh, I assume the easement will be, uh, executed if the motion...
Is approved.
Is approved, right? So we saw a letter in there from the authority. Okay. So the concept plan is, is not ready for permitting. We've got a long ways to go because it doesn't have any E and S. So the question is, is 16 feet wide enough to have two vehicles pass? You know, that, that would have been a question I would have asked Caldwell White. 16 feet, so I don't know.
I think that was mentioned, right? The width of the road.
16, 18 foot. And if that proves, and if that proves to be too narrow, we'll have some turnout spots.
Could pass each other.
We've got 50-foot easements, we've got plenty of it.
Right. And, and he's already put some ditch design on there. I already, I already see that. My question, you're going to use stone, crush stone, whatever, get in, uh, to get into the site. You've got in here parking, grass parking. What are you going to do when you have a, a downpour for your event? You know, three days before you have an event on Saturday? What are you going to, how are you going to handle cars coming in that don't have oil drive and they tear up your grass? What, what's your long-term thought on that?
That'll be the same problem that just about every wedding, country wedding venue has, is mud. And, uh, I was talking to Caldwell White, and he, uh, had an idea of some kind of matty that could put on top of the grass that the cars could travel on. That's one option we got to look at. And the other is, uh, put some, um, gravel and parking on. But Al's, Hammond's, uh, business, Jason's pretty well aware of this. All grass everywhere you go in it.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. You're good? Okay. Well, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Reminder that, uh, each speaker gets three minutes to speak. Reminder, if anybody needs to fill out one of these to speak, please do so now. Again, I'm opening the public hearing, and the first person out to speak is Gianna. I can't read the last name. Yeah, what she said.
Hi, Gina.
Could you please say your name and address for the record?
My name is Gina Missley. I'm leaving the 2508 Lock Haven Drive, right next to the, yeah, property. Okay. Congratulations, guys, going to have a good business. I hope so. Like she said, she probably have the 40 weeks weekend have the business. We'll bring tons of the, um, benefits for the county of Roanoke City. That'll be good. But another thing is, uh, if you can pull the map to, it's a driveway right next to the gas station. Actually, it's, um, next door of the gas station. And, uh, I'm, first of all, I'm, I moved to Roanoke 20 years ago. English is not my first language. It's the first time I've been here. And, uh, um, we bought this house a few years ago. Unfortunately, my husband passed away, so I'm living alone, and my daughter in college. So I have the big house, but the security system, if you build it right next to my house, for 40, I'm just assuming, 40 weekends, all happened. And it's 25, 20, 250 guests allowed. The tons of people, and all, all the car, cars running over the, our driveway, coming forth, back forth. And he said, I heard it, the easement will be 16 feet wide. He asked that it's big enough for the two car coming forward backwards? He asked, is issue, but for the our driveway, is a two-car back-forwards? One lot, four cars either. So you have the 250 people on the weekend or holiday, or whatever kind of the music event or wedding. Think about it. That busy traffic even on the Lock Haven Drive. Is that right? So, uh, also the music event and the wedding event, whatever the event, you will serve the beverage and alcohol. You don't have the permit or limited for the alcohol, how many alcohol can have it? You will go to the party, everybody wants a party. So you will see what's happening, if that. I don't want the stranger guests come to my driveway and knock my door. Do I come to the right place? Of course not. I'm a single woman living in one house. I don't want to deal those kind of things every day. If I leave the house a couple houses away, it's quite a far, I won't see anything because my happy Reinhardt had the business. They will build some profit for the city or the county, whatever. But for my position, it seems hard really hard. Gas station is here. My easement driveway right here. I'm the house right next, right next behind the, uh, Reinhardt house. So I can view the picture in the, in the future. I have deals, all things every weekend, hopefully. Or if I have the holiday, I have to deal with the holiday, too. If I'm good at traveling, this means my house is an open spot for everyone. Is that right? So I even don't know, you have the prument of the easement on the, on the drive, I mean, the gas station already. I didn't know that. So I think that's, it's kind of, it's kind of a bit of a threaten for, by myself live there. That's it.
Thank you.
I hope I explained it clear for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Do we have any other questions, other board?
I, I don't, um, have any particular questions, but I did want to see if staff could pull up the map real quickly. I just want to have a real quick understanding of what the last speaker, uh, was mentioning. If you would pull up that map, please. I think it's an issue that is going to be dealt with. It's the, uh, RIFA Authority and the Reinhardts. It's not really part of this petition, but I just wanted to see if I could see where the house is.
Our special use is all property.
Correct.
Okay. Now, so... I can't get my G I S to come up. It is.
Okay.
But it's pink.
We did just want to say that we would have a designated sign saying where, you know, like a business sign, you know?
Right.
This is where you turn for, like Lock Haven, like, has, but a bigger version.
That would be great. That would be great.
There's also five acres of wooded property between where this road goes in and where our house is. So there's no vision of the road that we're building because of all the dense forest that's in between them. We're going right to the dead center to the middle of the, uh, the 10 acres that's going back.
From who?
I think so.
Oh, it's, it's okay, Philip. If there's, if there's difficulty getting...
It's not so much that. It's, it's, it comes up, and then, uh, I think it's fine. Go ahead and turn it.
All right.
It shows up, it showed up as, with a pink hue over it. So, um... So, I don't know if it's the lot that comes off. So you have the three parcels. I don't know if she's talking about the, the driveway that comes back. Yeah, from our, from our view, it'd be the house. On the right. To the right, yes. Right. Or if it's the one next, there's a house here.
I see.
If you go to the concept, uh, plan, you'll see it better.
Okay.
It's a prime property.
I got it. I got it.
Yeah, go to the concept. There you go.
So, I'll take it as it's...
So with their...
This house?
Yeah.
With their, um, accommodation of a sign, I think that should eliminate that issue. And, uh, I would appreciate, I think it'd be good for you all, too, if there was a sign that made sure people knew which driveway they were going on. So thank you for that. Mr. Chairman, I don't really have any other questions at this time.
Any other questions for the board? All right, then I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make that motion.
Yes, ma'am.
And I find that the proposed special use permit meets the requirements of Section 30-19-1 of the Roanoke County Code, and that the proposed, proposed special use conforms to the standards set forth in Article 4, Use and Design Standards of the Roanoke County. Zoning ordinance is in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan and will have a minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. I therefore move that we approve the petition to obtain a special use permit with the following conditions. Mr. Attorney, do I need to read all these conditions?
No, Mrs. Hooker. They are the conditions that were detailed, um, by staff and as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Thank you. All right. We will now move to item L, Citizens' Comments and Communications. I have no one signed up to speak. So I'll move to item M, Reports and Inquiries of Board Members. I will begin with Mrs. Hooker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you to my fellow board members for attending the Registered Apprentice Signing Day at the Red Sox last Friday. I very much appreciated your support. It was a beautiful and very warm event that gave special recognition to our young people who are committed to a needed career in our community. It was a great event that showed this board's support of our CTE and support for our local industries. And I'm also very proud of Roanoke County for being the first local government to take on a registered apprentice. And I appreciate them, uh, investing in our students and leading the way for others. And what great news, now that my Temperview Road people are gone. What great news for our, uh, Temperview Road community because they finally have the ability to get broadband service through Comcast. It's been a long time coming, as we had to navigate hurdles to get here today. Special thank you to Bill Hunter for his leadership in serving our citizens. And now on to the next project. We need to continue this task until all our citizens have access to broadband service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Norwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm going to apologize. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible, so, but I've got a lot to say tonight. Delegate McNamara, who used to be served on this board at the request of Roanoke County, filed a bill which passed effective July 1st this year addressing personal property taxes. It grants localities permissive authority to return surplus personal property tax revenues to taxpayers. Under current Code of Virginia law, localities may return only surplus real estate property tax revenues. This bill was identical to companion Senate Bill 12, sponsored by Senator Sutherland. While Roanoke County chose a different method to provide 2022 taxpayer relief from personal property, this bill will provide an alternative to help other localities in our region and around the Commonwealth as they debate their relief plans, tax on personal property already billed for refunds, which will be allowed. So something we asked for that passed, uh, is going to benefit some other localities. On May 17th, Chairman Mahoney and staff and I attended the Fralen Biomedical Research Institute, where Secretary of the Commerce and Trade Karen Merrick spoke on accelerating Virginia's economy. Some points mentioned were using public-private partnerships, reducing permit barriers. Also, comments were made on workforce development and how that's needed to be strong. In addition, barriers to startup businesses are losing students as potential employees to other states, removing barriers to commercialization. And it emphasized, uh, Secretary Merrick emphasized, localities need to work with businesses as partners. One final point I know staff heard at this event was to look at companies and develop relationships, be proactive in reaching our first to start a conversation. How about that word proactive, Mr. Peters? We've used that a time or two. And that brings me to my point. Research labs for Roanoke County. Let's see what we can develop and expand the reach of the Fralen Biomedical Research Institute in the region to include our county. I bet someone has a list of research companies and labs to contact and locations for possible occupancy along the 419 corridor and in other areas of Roanoke County. It can be done. Also, on May 18th, I attended the 460 community meeting to hear about suggested changes along the corridor to improve accessibility and future development. While over 100 citizens attended, it was important for staff and supervisors to hear what they thought. And I encourage citizens to take the survey online, if you haven't done so already, at roanokecountyva.gov. On a new note, a story will appear tonight online in roanoke.com and in tomorrow's newspaper. Most of us on this board and I support the CTE conversation and the project. While the state, while the story states that we should borrow only $12 million in fiscal year '23, we have $13 million in projects which we voted on and approved, one of which is the 460 fire station near and dear to my heart. I do not anticipate cutting capital projects by $1 million, which would involve Explorer Park, the fire station, and new parks and recs facilities slated to occur in Hollins Road. Moreover, with $17 million allowable for potential borrowing, we only need 13. That means we'll have $4 million to bank for future borrowing. I would submit that we could share some of that, perhaps $2 million, subject to board approval towards current CTE future, uh, financing. While it, uh, the story did not address alternative methods of financing, I wanted to touch on those briefly. Finally, while traditional borrowing has always been the norm for our school projects and county projects in most instances, other revenue sources are possible. Let's call those hybrid solutions, as Ms. Hooker would say. First possible up is $23.6 million, which Attorney, County Attorney Lubek has confirmed that's possible if Roanoke County seeks to apply for those under General Assembly House Bill 763, which the schools may want to pursue working with the county. The legislation is to be voted on June 1st when the General Assembly returns. It is the Senate Bill Amendment that I'm speaking to. And yes, Roanoke County qualifies for the consideration of up to that amount of money, probably about one quarter of the cost of the CTE project. We must consider this if it's approved. Second, should the gross re-tack gets reduced, some $2.4 million slated for the schools may be used by the schools if they so wish towards construction. Lastly, unsolicited or solicited, public-private partnerships, P3 proposals, if you will, need to be studied for financial savings. Supervisor Radford and I are familiar with these, uh, and we have engaged discussion with the staff. And I would like the other three supervisors on this board of supervisors to get familiar with that. And I'd look to staff to help share that message. And on another note, we do much on a regional basis. We have regional authorities and we have regional agreements. I wonder what cost could possibly be mitigated on this project, the CTE, from a regional perspective. I think we need to ask ourselves that question because I think at the end of the day, this is going to be a large project with a high cost, and we may want to consider some ways to mitigate that cost in the future. Thank you very much.
Mr. Radford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to, to back up what, uh, Mr. Norris said. He and I have spent quite a bit of time and research trying to look at alternate financing, different ways that we can, uh, help the school board and our community, create a new, new facility for our CTE. There is different...
There's different, different methods and modes out there. I look forward to sharing that information in our June 14th, June 14th meeting with other members at that time. While we have been meeting today, I am sad to hear in the news that 18 children and adult were killed in a shooting in an elementary school in Texas. My heart goes out whenever I hear that. I am so saddened to hear that has gone on in our nation again, and I just pray that our, our schools will be able to protect our future, our future kids, and all, throughout all our, all our states and our communities. It's just heartbroken to hear that again. Also, Ms. Hooker brought up the broadband for Timber.
Timberview.
Timberview. On June 7th, we're going to have a special announcement for broadband in the Benton Mountain community with our Cox vendor up there, so look forward to sharing that good news with the Benton Mountain community at that time, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. The only comment I'll make is, you know, I do appreciate Mr. Radford and Mr. Norris' comments about CTE, and it was a joy to be at the Salem Red Sox game the other night to celebrate the apprentice program and what's happening there. I do hope that we will find some other alternative that it doesn't come on the backs of Roanoke County citizens to pay for this, so I am very hopeful that some other form of revenue will come. And then lastly, as Mr. Radford just mentioned, I think the last report, I've got it up here watching it now, I think it's up to 18 children and three adults have now been confirmed killed in the attack this morning or this afternoon. Our hearts go out to each and everyone, so please keep those families in your thoughts and prayers in the coming days.
Yeah.
And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. And we adjourn.